Call a common council meeting of October seventh, two thousand and twenty five to order. Roll call, please.
Elder woman has here.
Lorick.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzakowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Say you want to start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Approval of minutes, that is from September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. You all have them in your packets. I'll give you a minute or so to take a look. When you're satisfied, there's no discussion, errors, missions, or corrections. Motion, please.
Yeah, correction on the minutes on the agenda. Approval of minutes should be nine sixteen of twenty five.
Apologize for that. I'll be on the amended date. Any more discussions? Done. Motion on the amended.
Ask motions to approve the amended minutes from nine sixteen.
Lorick, seconds. Roll call.
Elderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Has.
Aye.
And item four is a mayoral proclamation recognizing White Cane Day, which will occur October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Catherine, please read that in.
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation pedestrian safety month, White Cane Safety Day, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Pardon me, that should be twenty five. Whereas October is pedestrian safety month, and for the sixty first year since October sixth, nineteen sixty four, October fifteenth is being recognized nationally as White Cane Safety Day. And whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately two hundred thousand Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use universally recognized travel aids, such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas Wisconsin's White Cane Law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than ten feet of a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. And whereas greater awareness of the White Cane Law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. And whereas communities implement many proven features to enhance the safety of all pedestrians, including sidewalks, accessible pedestrian signals, and curb ramps. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim October is pedestrian safety month and Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, is White Cane Safety Day in Oak Creek, and hereby also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year round, dated the seventh day of October, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you, Catherine. Council members? Any comments? We recognize White Cane Safety Day yearly. It's been going on for a number of years since I've been the mayor. Please watch pedestrians out there. There are a lot of elderly, as well as young folks, that are visually challenged. And it's paramount, safety comes first. Personally, in my family, I've never experienced blindness, but I have a very close friend whose son recently blinded in an accident. And for a twenty-five-year-old young person trying to navigate a whole new world like this, it's hard enough without people not being aware of the safety factors that go into it as he's learning how to redo everything in society. So I feel it's important we recognize it. Please be safe out there. No action is needed on that. And that will bring us to item five. First item is public hearing. It is a consideration of a request for a conditional use permit amendment for a building addition and various site modifications to Elizabeth Residence Assisted Living Community, an existing facility located at ten four forty-one South Nicholson Road.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request for a conditional use permit amendment for a building addition and various site modifications to Elizabeth Residence Assisted Living Community, an existing facility located at one zero four four one South Nicholson Road. Applicant is Richard Corey, Trappers One LLC and Trappers Two LLC, and Randy Hutware, TDI Associates, Inc. Property owner, Trappers One LLC and Trappers Two LLC. Therefore, the legal description, date of notice, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the common council. Kristi Lane, Community Development Director. The public hearing before you this evening is to consider an amendment for a conditional use permit for the assisted living facility on the west side of Nicholson Road. They're requesting to actually build on or add in addition to the building, which there are some conditions and restrictions from what used to be called the special use permit from nineteen eighty-five. The City of Oak Creek now uses the term conditional use permit. In the state of Wisconsin, those two terms are used interchangeably. Some community use column special use permit, some call them a conditional use permit. So there is an original special use permit from February nineteen eighty-five. There are two particular restrictions that, again, the applicant is requesting an amendment to. The, and that includes the height of the building and the required number of parking spaces. The current owner and operator would like to add on twenty-four units, a single-story building addition, but they need those modifications in order to move forward. So in nineteen eighty-five, ordinance number one zero nine seven was adopted. Two particular restrictions were, one, the maximum height of the building was restricted to twenty-five feet. And then it did require a parking ratio of one point five spaces per unit. And so what the applicant's requesting officially is to increase the allowable maximum height to thirty-five feet in the conditional use permit amendment, and also to only require a one-to-one ratio for parking. And just a side note, the zoning code, this particular zoning district does allow for fifty feet in height for a building. They're only asking for thirty-five. Just some details about the proposal. First, the existing facility here on the west side of Nicholson has fourteen units. The CBRF, about eleven thousand square foot building, they have eighteen parking spaces, and seventy-six percent of the site is green space. What they're proposing to do, you see the site plan here in front of you. The blue indicates the existing building, and the light or light tan color represents the building addition. They're proposing to add on about twenty thousand square feet or another twenty, twenty-four units. It does meet the setback requirements. The parking spaces, they're required to have fifty-seven at that one-to-five ratio. They're proposing to have forty. And then impervious surface, they're still within the requirement. They'll be at sixty-seven percent. They do have stormwater, rain garden. And then just to note that the trash receptacles will be enclosed with a brand-new construction masonry enclosure here on the kind of southeast corner of the site for the dump trucks to go all the way to the back of the property. There really wasn't no other sufficient space or location for the refuse enclosure because you don't want it in front of the building right along Nicholson Avenue. Architecturally, this is the showing the new building addition. There's a brick veneer, composite siding, gabled roof. They have a really nice fireplace and lobby meeting area in the, in the front of the new addition. Shed dormers, and again, they're requesting that thirty-five-foot height for the new building addition. The code does allow for fifty. They submitted a landscape plan. Don't typically talk about that, but that already went to Plan Commission. We just decided to do a site plan along with the conditional use permit amendment at the same time. They submitted a lighting plan. All of the landscaping and lighting does meet the code requirements. So the Plan Commission did review this at their August twenty-sixth meeting, and they did recommend approval of the two modifications to the common council. And that concludes my portion of the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Kristi. As it says, a public hearing, I will make three calls. If you wish to speak on the, on the subject, please approach podium, give your name and address. This will be the first call. Please approach podium. We'll need your name and address, sir.
My name is James Santisdale. I live at one oh, one oh four six one. My residence busts their property, but I'm about by where the dumpsters are. That's my property. So this addition doesn't directly affect me. A couple of things I want to say. Mr. Mayor, you said that they have a right to build on the property. They have to change things to build on the property, correct?
They've requested it, and they've gone through the proper procedure here through city ordinance.
Okay. Are you personally for the project?
Am I personally for it? At planning, yes, I voted for approval after we hashed it out.
If all the neighbors said no to something, you would still say yes, build it anyways, right?
I voted for it at planning.
But that's a yes. If all the neighbors said no, you would vote for it, and you would disregard what the neighbor said, right? You would vote for it.
I'm just taking comments tonight, but to be clear, I voted for it at planning after it was laid out.
Okay. My neighbor, he's a District Six cop in Milwaukee. He's, lives right on the corner that affected. He has an issue about a fence. I mean, when my father went to a nursing home in like two thousand and nineteen, we called this Elizabeth Residence, and they were way out of our price range, way out of our price range. So I don't know who they cater to, but I think maybe some fencing for the residents that have to look at a building now that used to look at green space. And my neighbor's issue is just, just build a fence. That was his issue. So really, it doesn't personally affect me either way. I could care less, it really doesn't. I can't really see it, but I just kind of voiced some of my neighbor's concerns.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Will be the second call. Third and final call. Okay, and we will now close the public hearing and go on to item six, which is consideration of a resolution approving the conditional use permit amendment for the building addition and various site modifications to the Elizabeth Residence Assisted Living Community, an existing facility at ten four forty-one South Nicholson Road. I'll open it up to councilmen and women. Comments? Greg?
As a resident brought up, there were some things brought up at the Planning Commission. A lot was discussed. Another issue that was brought up was refuse and garbage flying from their dumpster. They are enclosing that with masonry enclosure to help prevent garbage from flying in the neighbor's backyard. Parking was also discussed as they were looking to reduce the requirement for parking. However, as the applicant pointed out, at Planning Commission, the majority of their residents no longer drive inpatient residential facility. So that was all discussed at, at planning.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else? Seeing no discussion? Motion.
It will move to approve resolution one two six two four dash one zero zero seven two five, approving a conditional use permit amendment for the building addition and various site modifications to Elizabeth Residence Assisted Living Community, an existing facility located at one zero four four one South Nicholson Road.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Elderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Has.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item seven is new business. We will start off with the two thousand and twenty-six executive draft budget presentation. Max?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Max Gigan, Deputy City Administrator and Finance Officer. So before you tonight is the presentation of the two thousand and twenty-six executive draft budget, which I'm going to pull up shortly and walk it, walk you through it. If you may recall, I think this is our third year now. We've been doing this presentation at the common council meeting. Certainly just trying to get some visibility to the public as to what the budget proposal includes, as well as give the common council some time to digest the information in there and prepare for our budget workshop, which will be this Friday at eight thirty a.m. across the hall in the multipurpose room. So. So tonight, we're going to briefly walk through the property tax levy and an overview of our major operating budgets, our, our major funds, talk about human resource enhancements included in the budget proposal, briefly touch on what's included in the two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement plan, and then walk through some common council discussion and decision points. Really educational at this point, things we will dive into really on Friday. And then we'll talk about common council budget workshop expectations. So looking at the property tax levies, so this is showing the proposed levy and is comparing it to the twenty-five budget to what is proposed in the twenty-six budget. The overall levy for the city would increase five point four percent. And of that makeup, you can see how that's divided amongst our operating funds. These are the top four operating budget funds and then our debt service fund. Really, things to note here is that the amount of property taxes we can increase for operating expenditures is restricted by the state levy limits, so that amount has to be by net new construction. The net new construction percentage for this budget is one point seven one percent. But one of the items you may recall is that we did terminate TID number seven earlier this year. And part of the strategy, we talked at last year's budget workshop, was terminating that, that TID. It fulfilled its project plan, and with that termination, we were able to increase the operating levy an additional one point seven percent. So that really helped out. So overall, about a three point four percent increase for the operating budgets. And then you'll also see the debt service fund. You're seeing that levy increase about twenty-nine percent, so pretty significant. As the council may recall, we did approve the enhanced surface transportation rehabilitation program earlier this year, which authorized us to borrow three million dollars this year and then four million dollars moving forward for that surface transportation network. So this is the first year that we'll see a debt service payment. And we strategically had a little bit higher this year because we knew that with TID seven's closure and that levy coming off, that the property tax impact wouldn't be as significant. You're going to see a reduction of the levy, the TID levy specifically with that TID's termination. So looking at the property tax levy by fund, really, the one thing I want to point out, you can see our debt service fund levy is now at nine percent. It used to be about four percent. So it's kind of been inching up as we start issuing more debt to meet our capital needs. Otherwise, you can see how the levies distributed amongst the general fund, which is our largest operating budget, an EMS solid waste and dispatch. So this chart is a high level of the general fund revenues, and it's really showing the variance analysis. So what changed with our general fund revenues and why? And I'll explain the why as we go through this. And I'm not going to talk on all of them. I'll just really hit the, the major ones. Again, the property tax levy going about three point three percent, which is what we would expect with that net new construction plus the TID closure. We are seeing a reduction in our utility pilot payment. We're seeing our tax rates decrease pretty substantially these last few years, just as property values increase. So this is what we're expecting for next year. Looking at our shared revenue programs, so as you're aware, the city receives shared revenue in multiple forms through various programs. You can see what's changing from year to year, kind of in these top five here. And I'll briefly touch on them. The exempt personal paid aid payment is going up about ninety-one thousand dollars, and that is specifically tied to TID number seven and its closure. So that dollar amount would be zero if we didn't close a TID, but we get a portion of that aid back to the general fund. The general payment, this is just the municipal services payment. It's going up sixty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, so three point four percent. If you recall, back in two thousand and twenty-three, the state adopted legislation. They tied this payment to sales tax receipts moving forward. So projected sales tax receipts statewide are three point four percent. You'll see utility aid payment is going up three point five percent. But I would caution that the total payment didn't actually go up. This is one of a strategy we employed dating back to two thousand and twenty-one slash two thousand and twenty-two, where we restructured some debt in order to start shifting some of the utility aid from the debt service fund over to the operating budget. Because we've known that the operating budget is going to have more constraints than that debt service fund because we do have exemptions on being able to levy debt, or levy for debt service. So that does include a shift of some utility aid payment, as well as general transportation aids. The one thing you'll note is the amount has increased for two thousand and twenty-six. So that's, that's the first time in my tenure, so at least five years. So this aid is calculated on a six-year spending average of our transportation-related costs. And we kind of hit our rock bottom. As I've mentioned before, we had a lot of very high costs related to the development of the transportation network for Drexel Town Square. Those were in our six-year spending average. Those kind of came off, which was causing our aid payment had been going down ten percent, which is the maximum allowed for the last four years. So hit bottom, coming back up. And, you know, one of the positives with the common council's investment in the surface transportation program is that we're going to be spending more in that area, and that's actually going to lead to more state aid, which is great. And then the last one I wanted to really point out on the shared revenue programs is the expenditure restraint incentive program. So we do receive money if we limit our operating budget increase to a factor that is sixty percent of the net new construction percentage plus CPI. So essentially, the state incentivizes us to limit our budgetary increases. However, we can only participate in that program if our equalized mill rate as a community is over five mils. And what we've come to find is that we will no longer be eligible for that program in two thousand and twenty-eight. So what we did is we reduced down the amount of the payment into the two thousand and twenty-six budget strategically, so that it's matching what we're expecting to get in the two thousand and twenty-seven budget. Otherwise, we would have had a pretty large deficit to overcome in this regard. But again, it's a program that our equalized tax rate has to be over five mils, and we will no longer qualify. I'm just talking to colleagues throughout the state. This is actually becoming pretty common now, just seeing with that significant increase in property values over those last five years. And then the only other item I want to touch on, you'll see some additional increase for interest earnings, about one hundred and forty thousand, total budget of about five hundred and fifty thousand for the general fund. Again, you know, interest earnings can be the most volatile of sources, so it's something we don't like to touch very often. You know, we did analyze what our interest earnings are. And just for the fixed portion of our portfolio in the general fund, we earned about six hundred and eighty thousand last year, when we're anticipating about six hundred and fifty next year. And again, that's just the fixed amount. So that doesn't account, include what's in our general checking account, as well as our local government investment pool, which earned us about an extra six hundred thousand above that. So, you know, really don't want to be in a position where you're overextended on your interest earnings budget, interest rates start coming down too rapidly, and then I have to, you know, we have to come up with a solution on how to make up for that. So it is increasing to help balance this budget, but again, still feel very confident that just even our fixed investments will cover that amount. And this chart shows the general fund's revenue by categories. So you can see that property taxes are the predominant source for the operating budget, fifty-three percent. State shared revenue makes up twenty-six percent, and other taxes at six percent. But, you know, the one thing I always like to point out with this chart is that, you know, with property taxes, we do have restrictions, again, with levy limits and how much that can grow based off net new construction. You know, shared revenue is really dictated by the state and those various programs. And the other taxes is primarily the pilot payment, which is determined by the Public Service Commission. So, you know, when we talk about budgetary challenges and we say, well, are there ways we could just raise more revenue? If you look at our year's largest operating budget, you know, eighty-five percent of it, the state tells us how it's done. So, you know, that's where, when we talk through solutions and, you know, how do we try and raise additional revenues? You know, the discretion that we have as governments is very small and really affecting things like license and permit fees, charges for services. So next, looking at the general fund's expenditures. So this is showing it by function. So by state statute, we approve the budget by function. So those functions for Oak Creek are general government, public safety, health and human services, public works, and then culture, recreation, and library. You'll see that overall general fund expenses going up three point four percent. You can see what the percentages are by function. The ones I'll really call out are the ones that are pretty abnormal. You'll see health and human services up sixteen point six percent. And this is specific to the case manager position getting added into the general fund budget. Historically, this was funded through American Rescue Plan dollars through the end of two thousand and twenty-four, and then with Health Department grants in two thousand and twenty-five. But what we've seen is that all those grants have lapsed, and there isn't federal or state grant funding available for that position. So it's included in here and now supported with the tax levy. And then culture, recreation, and library, we'll discuss it a little bit later, but there are some personnel enhancements there, just as that facility and its usage is becoming a lot busier. So this is just showing the general fund expenditures by function, again, as a chart. So about fifty percent of all of our operating budget does go to public safety. The next largest is general government, which is everything from community development to engineering, to administration, finance, IT, all that stuff. Third largest would be public works, and then culture, recreation, library, and then human services. So this is showing the general fund expenditures by category. So things like personnel costs, you know, operating costs, whether it's utilities, supplies and equipment, other services, maintenance of vehicles. You know, the one thing I'll really point out is that if you look at the top number employee costs, you know, employees make up a predominant part of our budget. One of the things we talk about is the local government is, you know, this is a human capital-intensive operation. And it takes people to provide the programs and services. So you'll see that, you know, we spend about eighty percent of that budget, that operating budget, on people. But you also see on that difference column, you know, the just over one million dollars. So of all the new money we're able to raise for the operating budget, ninety-five percent of that's reinvested in people. And you'll see that we do have some other changes, still experiencing inflationary increases, seeing some decreases with utilities. We did have a large LED streetlight project, starting to pay dividends on our electricity bills, streetlights. So great to see there. And again, this is just showing those expenditures by category. Again, eighty percent of our costs are, are people. And then the next largest category is other services. This is kind of a catch-all, many things like IT software, contractual services for our assessor, for our recreation platform, and so on. So these are kind of contractual services. Third largest is utilities, and then supplies, equipment. Next, going to just kind of briefly transition to our other major funds, just kind of highlight some of the more significant changes happening. So solid waste fund, not too much changing here, other than the refuse contract. We're in the second year of a five-year contract next year. That's increasing two point six percent. On the EMS fund, some things you'll see is that, in particular, ambulance revenues, we've kind of hit our, our maximum revenue point. If you talk to the fire department, we're actually seeing call volume starting to drop off for ambulance trips, which for the last five years, it was steadily increasing about ten to twelve percent a year. So that's really plateaued, and that's where you see a slight decrease there. But you'll also see we do have a Milwaukee County MIH grant for two hundred thousand. So this is something the council approved entering into earlier this year. So this is paying for the MIH program, which is essentially like community paramedicine program. Although it's budgeted here, we're not utilizing it to balance the budget, knowing that the grant does expire in two thousand and twenty-seven. So it is finite money, but you do see it there. And then on the bottom, you'll see the expenditures. One thing to note, there is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of capital purchases. We've been trying to spend down the fund balance. Uh one thing to note, uh there is seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars worth of capital purchases, uh we've been trying to spend down the fund balance. Uh it's gotten very healthy over the past few years, uh just with interest earnings and then we were underbudgeting that ambulance revenue for a number of years. All those trips were going up, so uh we did include a budget for, or a higher budget for capital purchases this year. And then lastly, our consolidated dispatch fund, uh really big changes here, you can see. Uh on the revenue side, our contractual amounts with Saint Francis and South Milwaukee for serving them, uh the South Milwaukee amount. Uh went up a little bit more than the Oak Creek and the Saint Francis share, just as we get a better vol- uh understanding of their call volume. Uh the formula and the cost allocations really driven by uh call volume, so. Now that we're starting to dispatch them for them, it's been ten months now, uh really have a better understanding of how that call volume is and. I think had a misunderstanding or misreporting of their call volume, it's actually a little bit higher than we were expecting. Then you'll see total increase on the budget about two point eight percent, again largely people, but we do have some IT costs. So next, just gonna wanna transition, talk about uh some of the re- human resource enhancements in the proposed twenty twenty six budget. Uh so it does include a three point five cost of living adjustment uh for all city employees effective January first twenty twenty six. Um you know, one thing to note with this is that employees who are members of the law group. Uh which is the Labor Association of Wisconsin, uh those are primarily DPW uh labor employees. Uh they're only eligible to receive a base building wage increase that's equal to CPI, uh and CPI is two point six four percent. So uh what this budget proposes is that they would receive the two point six four percent base building and then an additional. Point eight six percent adjustment as a one-time payment that would get them to three point five percent. And then there are some additional either positions or adjustments to hours included in the budget proposal as well. Uh a part-time graphic designer, uh so we can do graphic design services for marketing and public relations in-house instead of contracting that out. Uh the addition of a part-time police aid position, again, just trying to uh be a little bit more proactive in some of our. Less intensive uh police responses as well, as we found it's been a a great asset to have the police saves. Uh as a kind of feeder program or to transition into full-time officers. Uh the addition of a part-time librarian, uh really helping enhance some of the library's programming, they're having uh just challenges with. Uh the volume of programming and having available librarians and then additional part-time. Or wages and benefits for a part-time library clerk, so adding about four hundred hours. Next, we'll talk about the twenty twenty six capital improvement program. Uh so one all's capital improvement program is nine point eight million dollars, so just shy of ten million dollars. Uh you can see the funding sources and how it's broken out, uh the largest is gonna be a debt issuance we'll do in the spring for the transportation program. Otherwise, uh you can see this two million dollars of cash as revenue. Um from mostly the utility aid payment as well as the We Energies mitigation payment. And uh otherwise, you can see the funding sources between stormwater EMS fund, so on and so forth. So uh this is the first year that the enhanced surface transportation rehabilitation program is included in the CIP document. Last year, uh we did budget for it with cash, uh and then when the council directed us to start doing a debt issuance. Uh in the win- earlier this winter, um it we have now transitioned that and it's in. The capital improvement program budget, uh but you know, one of the things that transitioning that program to. Debt issuance really did is, one, it in- increased our investment in that transportation infrastructure from one million to four million. So significant investment from the common council, but it also doubled the CIP budget's capacity from a million dollars to two million dollars. So one of the things we discussed last year was, we were just having challenges with filling departmental requests and needs of the organization because. We didn't have av- available funding to kind of fund all those non-transportation-related priorities, so uh certainly. By uh moving towards this enhanced program and adding budget capacity, we were able to fund all the department requests. Uh and when we had this conversation with the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, it's uh pretty straightforward, um because we didn't really have too many tough decisions. To make funding ones. Here's a highlight of just major projects that are included in the twenty twenty six CIP. Again, the four million dollars for the enhanced surface transportation program. Uh you do see there is funding for a fire engine replacement, uh this is something that actually wasn't in the original submission to. Uh the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, uh it was actually, this fire engine was approved in the twenty twenty three CIP. You guys authorized the purchase in twenty twenty three, April, um and we're gonna take delivery in September, so. This includes money, uh specifically, it's a combination of cash on hand from Capital Projects Fund. Uh the ARPA fund, all the interest we earned on our ARPA dollars, uh as well as from the We Energies mitigation. So uh something we wanted to budget now instead of having to do a budget amendment later. Uh and then you'll see seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for stormwater ditch and pond maintenance. Uh we do have an ambulance replacement for four hundred fifty thousand, uh the police vehicle and equipment replacement program. Again, this is something that shifted from the operating budget to the capital budget last year, as we had operating budget challenges. Uh do have three hundred two thousand in there to revamp the building access control system for all city facilities. Uh and then the replacement of a snowplow and dump truck for two hundred sixty-five thousand, I believe that dump truck is from nineteen ninety-four, so. I'll do. And then lastly, we'll just kinda talk through common council discussion and decision points, uh you know, these are things that we. The city administrator and I talk about, um and things that really came up as we were putting together this budget proposal. Uh so one, just a multi-year budget strategy, something we really like to stress. Is that when we're putting together a proposals budget, it's not done in a vacuum just to make this work, you know, the decisions that we make today affect the budget. As well, so you know, just wanna remind that of the council, and again, very similar to last year. We asked for is, can we close TID seven, it fulfilled his project plan and by doing that, that made this budget a lot easier. Balance than it would have been. Um Health Insurance Fund, again, still experiencing challenges there, just wanna update the council where things are at, you know, strategies we've taken. Uh talk a little briefly about our tax increment districts and kind of the long-term financial outlooks. And then uh stormwater management program, we'll have uh Assistant City Administrator Engineer Matt Sullivan follow up and just talk about. You know, the money that the council invested in this program by increasing that ERU, stormwater fee. Thirty-nine to seventy dollars, what's that doing, what are we getting from that? So on the multi-year budget strategy, uh you know, one thing that is very clear as we went through this budget development process is that. We were only able to balance this budget because we terminated TID number seven. Um that allowed us an additional five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the operating budget. As I mentioned earlier, the city will also no longer be part of the expenditure restraint incentive program beginning in twenty twenty eight. Uh the amount we are slated to receive in twenty twenty six is about two hundred and fifteen thousand. Um but what we did in this budget is we reduced that amount to thirty thousand, knowing that we're gonna be out in two years. So thirty thousand's about how much we're projecting for a night for twenty twenty seven's budget, so. Instead of, you know, budgeting that where it's actually at and then having to overcome a hundred eighty, a hundred ninety thousand dollar loss. Let's do it now while we can, uh while we had, you know, this additional funding available from TID seven's closure. Uh and then we're also still experiencing inflationary pressures, I know nationwide inflation has tamed uh from where it was. But we are still experiencing it as a city, uh just in conversations with departments. As they're going through procurement processes, we are hearing that costs are still going up. And again, uh this budget was crafted with future budgets in mind, again, very similar, that decision to not fully budget that ERP payment. Uh again, really done in such a way that uh is gonna set us up better for the twenty twenty seven budget, but. You know, we will leave you with this, that our twenty twenty seven budget uh will probably begin with a pretty significant deficit. Have to, you know, discuss with personal finance committee and council as to how you overcome that, cause uh and just very simple math. Um you know, if things were to stay the same on the expenditure side and you have five hundred thousand dollars less revenue. Because you're not closing a TID district, uh that right there kinda shows you very high level. And again, this is not un- this is not uncommon uh across the state, you know, talking to colleagues uh. In this field, whether it's in the Milwaukee area or across the state, you know, they all have budget deficits and uh I think we've actually been really fortunate with our. Anything, um you know, the conversations that other communities are having are even more challenging, then I think we will be. Next, our health insurance fund, uh so as the common council's been aware, uh we have been subsidizing the health insurance fund. Uh it's had five, about five million dollars in losses since twenty eighteen, uh and that's been subsidized through general fund budget surpluses. Uh if you look at the health insurance market today, it's starting to deteriorate uh much worse than where it was even just a year or two ago. Uh so our total premiums are increasing five point five percent. Uh the one thing I will say is that is less than medical trend, so medical trend is essentially medical inflation, that's nine point five percent. Uh the state increased their premiums for their employees as well as for all the local governments who participate in that program, eleven percent. So uh it's just giving you a sense as to where this market is heading, uh and unfortunately, it's it's probably not sustainable. So something is gonna have to change. Um you know, we do have some cost containment strategies we've implemented in the last few years. Uh specifically, we did a very detailed analysis of our pharmacy benefit fit manager in twenty twenty four. Uh and we renegotiated our our prescription drug contracts with some pretty favorable discounts. Uh we found that the vendor we were using was actually still the best pricing back in twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty five, we did switch to the UMR's Nexisacil product, which is a two-tiered network. Uh which has some steerage to four of the six major health systems in southeast Wisconsin. Uh and you know, we really did that because we were faced with a ten percent premium increase last year and that was able to mitigate the full ten percent increase. Which was great, in twenty twenty six, uh we are proposing that our non-represented employees. Uh premium share would increase from ten percent to twelve percent, uh and then all city employees' premium share would increase to thirteen percent. Uh and that is what was agreed to with the police and fire unions, thirteen percent in twenty twenty seven. Uh so this budget, it, we weren't able to allocate additional funds to get rid of that structural deficit, you know, that's something we can continue to address in the future budgets, but. Did at least wanna say there are things we are working on uh to try and get this right size, um but certainly. Adding the additional money and getting it right sized there, something we will continue to work on. Our TIDS and their financial outlook, um so you know, one thing just want the common council to be aware is that. Um the tax increment districts, uh they receive their tax increment based off a TID tax rate, so. Uh the easiest way to describe the TID tax rate is that it's the TID levy divided by increment. And you know, I think the one thing we're seeing and what we've seen since twenty twenty one is that the city's TID tax rate has decreased twenty-seven percent. Uh and that's primarily due to significant increases in property values and you know, more specifically. Uh what is driving it is that you're seeing residential properties appreciate at a much higher level than you are commercial, industrial, manufacturing. Um and what that's doing is that those, the tax rate is dropping faster than the increases. Values within the TID districts, cause a manufacturing property only appreciates two to three percent a year and the tax rate drops six percent. Receiving less revenue in that year. Um and really, this is more educational for the council, uh so that lower tax rate is leading to less tax increment. And especially, we're seeing this and we're seeing financial strain in those districts who have. Um they're mature districts, uh things where we've provided incentives or we have debt service for public investments five, ten, fifteen years ago. And you know, we're trying to just pay off the debt service and get this district to closure. Um but you know, what we're also seeing is that with the decrease in the tax rates, um as well as. You know, how capital expenditures are maturing to assess value. That the return on investment for an assist- a city-assisted developer project is just lengthening, so. I can tell you ten, fifteen years ago, standard was you wanted to have your ROI on a on a finance development. About ten years, and I can tell you that many of them are stretching way past that. Um and loo- looking at twenty twenty six, you'll see that actually six of the eight. TID districts are gonna receive less revenue next year than they did this year, and again, all a function of decreasing tax rates. Uh at a faster rate than the values of the TIDS are increasing, so you know, what does this all mean? Um you know, we just have many districts that are cannot support additional public investments. Um unless that investment's directly tied tied to a development that generates taxes to cover, so. Again, more for common council awareness, um you know, we've utilized surpluses into districts to fund some capital projects in past years. And you know, the financial outlook that just is probably not gonna be possible unless uh tax rates stabilize. And then lastly, as I mentioned, um you know, the common council did make a historic investment in the stormwater management program. By increasing that stormwater fee from thirty-nine to seventy dollars per ERU in last year's budget, and Matt's gonna provide. Uh an update kinda where that program's at for the common council. And lastly, our common council budget workshop is this Friday at eight-thirty, will be across the hall in the multipurpose room. Uh you know, the things we'll do is we'll go through these common council discussion decision points, a little bit more detail. Uh ask for the council's feedback, uh then really turn it over to the this body and if you guys have any questions or comments. Uh about the budget just in general or how the budget works or for departments, uh that's your opportunity to ask those questions. And then if we have time, uh we may talk about some initiatives at our five-year strategic plan, and again, that would just be of time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments? A lot, very good, but a lot, uh you're gonna see more of it on Friday for sure. If anything's jumping to mind, please take the floor. Hey, Max, got off easy, um it'll all come on Friday after they digest this, so, thank you. Uh we'll move on to item eight, and that's consideration of a motion to approve a three-year appraisal services agreement with Tyler Technologies. Inc. for full assessment and software services uh for the period of November first, twenty twenty five. Through October thirty-first of twenty twenty eight, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same. Uh Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm Sarah Koshinsky, the administrative services director. Um I'm here to present the three-year renewal contract with Tyler Technologies for our assessment services. Um we've been with Tyler for over thirty years and the one thing I wanted to highlight tonight was we were able to secure. Um the same fee for each of the three years of the contract, so there are no increases over the term of the contract. Um I do have Sam Monroe here from Tyler Technologies, he is our city assessor, um we're both happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, we've been very fortunate to have him, very consistent, very fair, at least that's my opinion. Nothing else, we will ask for a motion on eight.
They'll move to approve the three-year appraisal services agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for the for full assessment and software services for the period. Eleven oh one twenty-five through ten thirty-one twenty-eight and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Marshall's second.
Well, call.
Elder woman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzdakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item nine is consideration of an ordinance relating to the designated city polling places and board boundaries. And to repeal and recreate sections point zero five sub A sub one. Two point zero seven A sub A one and sub B. Um two oh seven sub A two, sub two, sub B. And two oh, two point oh seven sub A, sub three, sub B, the municipal code. Catherine, you want to sub that out?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Good evening, council members. We try not to do this very often as a courtesy to our residents and our voters in our municipality, trying to leave polling locations where they are causes confusion when we need to move them. The last time that we came to was in 2017, where we did make a polling location change that took effect in 2018. And then after that, due to COVID, we consolidated all polling locations both in August and November for those elections. And at that time, we had, the entire city was consolidated into the high school, and then in August, it was the middle school. So we're coming tonight from the clerk's office presenting this change. We have outgrown our space at the school district building, which serves District 1, Ward's 1, 2, and 3. It's been very challenging during the larger elections to accommodate both parking and the traffic in and out of that location, and then just the sheer number of people. For November, we had an unprecedented 98% turnout. So even though our absentee ballots mailed in and in person are very high, we still have a large turnout at the polls. So we really were challenged in November at this, at the election. We did a assessment with the cyber security and infrastructure security agency, and this location, they highlighted to us, was very challenging in protecting both the people that work there and the voters on Election Day, as there's so many entrances and exits back into the workspace. We did the best we could to secure that location and make sure both our voters and staff of the school district were safe. But at this point, you know, we feel that, considering the size and the security challenges there, and the potential that at some place down the road, this building does belong to the school district and may be relocated at this point, we don't know. But we did do a couple of different surveys at locations. One that we considered was M A T C. We did a walkthrough with maybe 12 different people from their administration and their facility and their security folks, and they really don't have a location within their building that would be very accessible to parking and accessibility, getting in and out. Their open space that they were willing to, you know, provide to us was very limiting as well. They tried very hard to accommodate us, and it just wasn't feasible. The space really would have been smaller than what we have at the school district. So as nice as M A T C was to be another taxing jurisdiction, to be, you know, an institution that we could use their space, we were unable to do that if there just wasn't a location within the property that we could use. So District 2 currently is served by Discover Church, Ward's 4, 5, 6, and they have been more than accommodating there for our needs for District 2. And they have long offered to host a second location there, and I think at this point we're really strongly considering and hope that you will consider too, to approve this ordinance to move District 1 there. District 1 is traditionally one of the lowest voter registration numbers in the city. So to combine those two locations, we see that there's ample parking, ample access. There's a lot of benefits for the city. To consolidate a polling location, we need less staffing, less supplies, DPW has less locations to go to. There's, you know, it, it benefits us in a lot of different ways from administration. To notify voters of this, I think that's always, and it would be my concern if I were you, we plan on doing postcards to every resident within District 1 that would be affected, all of them. So they would do a postcard, we would have social media updates on our website, we could do a press release at all as well, and we also post a type D notice before every election, so that would be published in the newspaper. And in the past, we really haven't had challenges with when we change a location, it seems that people go into MyVote to look at where they need to be on Election Day, and we really promote MyVote as a tool that is the Wisconsin Election Commission site, because we can update that in a heartbeat if anything needs to change, even in an emergency situation. So we really haven't seen too many challenges recently, and especially during COVID when we change. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them if I'm able.
Questions, comments? Brad?
My only question, having voted at the Discover Church for many elections, I know that there's plenty of room there, plenty of parking, plenty of space inside the building. Is there any concern that wait times will be affected negatively, or you're going to expand staff, it just won't take as many as two separate locations? Is that correct?
I'm glad you asked that question, Alderman Lorick. So within a polling place, we already with Badger Books have four books per location. So our staffing for that would be somewhere probably between 12 and 15 poll workers. When we combine these locations, we wouldn't decrease that number. We would take all those same supplies and put them there. So since the 2020 census, we've had to do reporting by ward rather than district. So rather than walk into District 1, find your alphabet name and vote, now you walk into District 1, and you're either in Ward 1, 2, or 3. Now, you're walking in and you're either in 1, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So the, the wait line shouldn't be increased at all. In fact, I feel that we will have probably many poll workers to help, that at some point we can downsize that, that reporting unit, that location. So no, it shouldn't impact wait times at all. In fact, I feel like it should make it better because we're going to move it to a larger space within the building.
Thank you.
Catherine, where are 4, 5, and 6?
They're at Discover Church, so it would be combined.
Oh, they are, oh.
Yep, so it would be combined in two locations into one. Yeah.
Anything?
No, I was just going to say, I think this is a great change. It's getting very congested in District 1 parking, and especially around 4, 5 o'clock, it's getting a little dangerous with traffic, people not paying attention, couple minutes down the road, but I think we just need to make sure we have good notification. As long as people know what's going on, it should be a positive change.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, and we identified those concerns. So we will do everything possible to make sure that those voters are aware of the change. Will the school district let you put a sign on the day of the election at first? Yes, we will go ahead and we'll put a sign on the doors of the old location on the school district administration building, directing them to where they need to go.
Other discussion? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Haz moves to approve ordinance number 3140 relating to designated city polling places and ward boundaries and to repeal and recreate sections 2.05 Sub A Sub 1, 2.07 Sub A Sub 1 Sub B, 207 Sub A Sub 2 Sub B, and 2.07 Sub A Sub 3 Sub B of the municipal code.
Lorick seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Item 10 is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Michael Havy to the Board of Health for a free three-year term expiring 10 of 2028. Questions, comments? Seeing none, motion?
They'll move to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Michael Havy to the Board of Health for a three-year term expiring October of 2028.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Next, we have Public Works and Utility, and we have consideration of a resolution approving a temporary construction easement and statement of non-reimbursement for utility and public easements with the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation along South Howell Avenue from Oakwood Road to College Avenue. It is subject to technical corrections. Brian?
Good evening. Brian Johnson, utility engineer. This is a DOT project that they're bringing forward to do some work on Howell Avenue from County Line up to Grange, actually. So we're only going up to college as the city limits end there. This is a whole lot of paperwork and a whole lot of exhibits for not a lot of work. With the work that they're doing, what this does is request permission to be on our easement. They're not changing anything with our easement, it's just that they're going to be working on top of our easement. So they're asking that we don't pay for it and that we don't have an issue with them being on our easement, which we don't. There's various locations throughout the corridor, does include, there's one section that's water, there's one section that is sewer. The sewer does include sanitary and storm sewer in those easements, but they lump them altogether.
Questions for Brian? All straightforward. Seeing none, motion?
They'll move to approve Resolution 12625-100725 approving a temporary construction easement and statement of non-reimbursement by utility for public easements with the State of Wisconsin's Department of Transportation along South Howell Avenue from Oakwood Road to College Avenue, subject to technical corrections.
Guzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderwoman Haz.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a motion to authorize the utility engineer to enter into a general service agreement with Northern Drivers USA Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $385,890 for repair and cleaning of the 30-inch raw sewer intake line, subject to technical corrections. Brian?
Water main.
Water.
Water main. This is a project where we have our existing 30-inch intake line that goes out into Lake Michigan. We know that there is a hole in this line, and we want to repair that feature, and also we know that this is full of sediment, which is just sand and debris from not using this line that has filled in over time. This is a redundant line, so in order for us to keep saying we have a redundant line with the DNR, very vital that we can get this either cleaned out and repaired, or we have to go to the DNR and say we don't actually have redundant line anymore. So very important project for us. We saw this at conferences for the past couple of years. Oshkosh just did this last year. Two Rivers has done this process with their intakes. It makes a mess in the lake. All that sand and debris, they put big pumps and inject water back through our intake line, and that all gets blown back out into the lake. So DNR has approved this process. We have our DNR permits for this to happen, but you do have to notify the locals of what's happening, Coast Guard, because there's this big plume of sand and dirt that shows up in the lake, so it makes people pretty nervous with it. It's a pretty exciting project. Did pass around some pictures. That's kind of the, the setup of what they're going to have there. They're looking, I think, four or five different pumps to set up along the shoreline, and that'll run the hoses out into the lake, bring that back in, run it through their contraption to force that water in the vortex that they want to produce through the water main, through our intake, through the, the low lift station, and blow that all back out through the lake. This is the only guy that does this, it's a patented process, so it's kind of him or nobody at this point. We are bringing it forward to the council tonight just to try and get another week. He cleared up another schedule, another project, so he can move in. He wants to be off the lake by November 1st, so he's pushing hard to get here, get set up, get everything moving so he can get on and off the lake. Lake starts getting rough come November, so that's where that. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Can you talk a bit about the repair?
First, we have to find it. We have a good idea where it is. The existing line that was out there from early 1900s from Peter Cooper that we took over, there is a connection point with our new line that runs into the low lift station. We believe it's at that connection point where it's failed. So they'll have to go down though, they'll send their divers out, assess what is going on, and then inspect the pipe, figure out what we can do to repair it. Those repair costs, the only cost that's over and above what this price is, is going to be for what materials they need to do that fix. Because they're already on site for this, he doesn't charge any extra for that work. It varies. It's about 3,000 feet out into the lake, so it just follows the bottom of the lake. It's roughly 15 feet or so where we think the break is.
What's for Brian? Okay, seeing no discussion, motion?
Marshall, move to authorize the utility engineer to enter in the general services agreement with Northern Drivers USA Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $385,890 for repairs and cleaning of the 30-inch raw water intake line, subject to technical corrections.
Haz seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Thanks, Brian. Item 13, consideration of a motion to approve the utility occupancy license agreement number 2517117 for the easement at 635 West Drexel Avenue.
Tom? Good evening. This is just to get an approval from council here to sign the contract. This is for a 100-foot easement that goes on the south side of Drexel, right over here by the railroad, to run our fiber. This is just in the process to get this far with the railroad, so we're happy to finally see it, get it approved, and continue running the fiber to the pump station, so. Any questions, happy to answer.
Okay, seeing no questions, motion?
Haz moves to approve the utility occupancy license agreement number 25-17117 for the easement at 635 West Drexel Avenue.
Lorick seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Item 14 is consideration of a resolution accepting the dedication of the public improvements and releasing the developer from the development agreement for the Lake Shore Commons Phase 1 project. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Sullivan, Assistant City Administrator and City Engineer. Mayor and common council, this is the authorization dedicated our public improvements and release the developer of the agreement. This was held from the 9/16 meeting, and what we've come to is, it's been a few years, three years or two years in the making as far as construction and that, been a lot of struggles as far as completing the work, mainly electrical, on our street lighting and getting it to, I mean, our satisfaction. We finally have come to that point where everything has been completed to our satisfaction, and at this point, we would like to release our developer from the agreement and have it signed. Everyone's been out there, it's a big part of our community now, a great addition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Seeing none, motion?
Marshall, move to approve Resolution number 12623-091625, accepting dedication of the public improvements and releasing the developer from the development agreement for the Lake Shore Common Phase 1 project.
Haz seconds.
Roll call.
Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Haz.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 15 is consideration of a motion to award the 2025 pedestrian improvement projects, unit price, contract-based bid to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Pablocke Paving, an estimated cost of $130,000.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is that motion to award the project for pedestrian improvements. Over the past few years, we've had several locations where we've had requests on improvements, primarily for sidewalk ramps, and providing those safe pedestrian crossings throughout our community. Within this project, we had two that were identified, and then an additional one, which is obviously right here in our own development here at Drexel Town Square between our roadway and Woodman's, where we've seen significant pedestrian traffic from residents at Parterre and that going to Woodman's, walking our sidewalk where it's not presently there. We've been working with Doon and Woodman's to try to come to an agreement under easements and that. DPW is still working on that. What we wanted to do here was present two locations that we could do other work in, and then do an alternate bid to see if we would come in with favorable prices on that alternate. Unfortunately, due to some of our contract constraints here and trying to get the work done this fall, our prices were pretty high on our alternate, so we're recommending that we just award our base bid, get our two projects done in areas that have been waiting, get those completed, and then work through the process with the DPW, Woodman's, to make sure that we get those agreements in place, bid that out with. Bid that out with next year, next year's projects. Try to get better quantities with, or prices where their quantity increase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt? Uh, motion.
Ritz moves to award the twenty twenty-five pedestrian improvement projects, unit price, contract base bid to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Pablocke Paving, at the estimated cost of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty dollars. Project number two, two, zero, three.
Lorick seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Parking Lot Maintenance LLC, authorizing final contract payment under project number two, four, zero, one, seven.
Thank you, Mayor. This, um, project would be a closeout for our project at Chapel Hills where we did improvements on the tennis courts and basketball courts. We basically took our tennis court, both of them, uh, kept one as a tennis court and then added two pickleball courts and then improved the basketball court and paving in that area. We also added new backstops for their ball diamond. While this work was actually completed under our bidding, that is to, basically, we didn't do a lot of uncutting. Our sub- subgrade was in good condition, so we were able to save some money there. But this would basically not release the contractor, they still have a one-year warranty on time of exceptions, acceptance. Happy to answer any questions.
Anything? Matt? Motion.
Huzz moves to approve resolution number one, two, six, two, six, one, zero, zero, seven, two, five, accepting the workmanship of Parking Lot Maintenance LLC and authorizing final contract payment under project number two, four, zero, one, seven.
Lorick seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item seventeen is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Edgerton Contractors, Inc., authorizing final, final contract payment under project number two, three, zero, zero, five.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As everyone aware, this is one of our larger projects that we've undertook in a long time, um, with our bluff stabilization project. This would be authorization to provide that final payment to Edgerton. The work has been completed since July, we've just been, you know, kind of looking over things, maintaining and doing our maintenance and review of the vegetation that has been put out there for our natives. We're very happy with what's going on, we're seeing actual native plants starting to emerge. We've done three mowings to, to date, which is very good. Our contractors and consultants that are on board here are pretty, pretty thrilled actually to see the growth and stabilization that we've seen. Um, there are a few contract change orders, obviously, that you'd see through the process here that we went through. Authorized for one, kind of the, I guess, approach on stabilizing the bluff where we added the stone, did a different method versus that, that was a major increase. Um, we also increased some areas where we've had to bring in topsoil and different proganics and different, I guess, methods of trying to stabilize and then do our planting of our native seeds, where we were seeing some, I guess, animals, geese, seagulls and that eating our seeds, so we went with a different approach to kind of solidify that and allow our native plants to have a better chance of growth. Um, that's where you'll see your major increases in prices, but all in all, it's under what we anticipated in the long run. Prices were good, very happy with the results and looking forward to the next phases. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt? Motion.
Marshall moved to approve resolution number one, two, six, two, seven, dash, one, zero, zero, seven, two, five, accepting the workmanship of Edgerton Contractors Incorporated and authorizing final contract payment under project number two, three, zero, zero, five.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
As item eighteen is License Committee, I'll turn that over to Alderman Ritz.
Thank you, Mayor. I included in your packet is a list of, uh, operator licenses that the License Committee approved. Please look it over and let me know if you have any questions. Hearing no questions, Ritz moves to approve. The various license request is listed on ten, seven, uh, twenty-five License Committee report.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And item nineteen is consideration of a motion to approve the October first, twenty twenty-five vendor summary report in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Please take a look at your packet and if you have any questions, please just take the floor. There's no discussions or questions, motion on nineteen.
They'll move to approve the October first, two thousand twenty-five vendor summary report in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, seventy-one cents.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item twenty is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, Wisconsin Stats, to consider proposed development and potential terms that may include the investment of public funds on the property located at seventy-seven, sixty-one, South Highgate Avenue. And B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, Wisconsin Stats, consider an agreement and potential terms that may include the investment of public funds between the City of Oak Creek, Abundshine Park Beer Garden LLC, doing business at Abundshine.
Thank you, Mayor. They'll move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, consider proposed development and potential terms that may include the investment of public funds on the property located at seventy-seven, sixty-one, South Highgate Avenue. B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to consider an agreement and potential terms that may include the investment of public funds between the City of Oak Creek and Abundshine Park Beer Garden LLC, EBA Abundshine Beer Garden.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and we will return at its conclusion. Thank you.
Give me an open session.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Uh, twenty-two is to consider any motion, uh, to take action. So that will get us to adjournment, folks.
Ritz moves for adjournment.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Huzz?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
And since it's on everybody's mind, sorry, Max, go Brewers.